Hello, welcome everyone. Welcome to today's special meeting of City Council. This is Tuesday, May 8th, and we're agendizing this meeting as start time at 4:00 PM. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present and we'll call the meeting into order. And this is a special meeting for our first fiscal year 2018-19 budget study session. First item on the agenda, and then following that, we'll have our Morro Bay Police Department drone presentation. So Dana, Scott may help me out, either one, I think, on the flow of the meeting today. I think we're going to do our study session and we'll have our police chief introduce the drone presentation, and then we're going to step outside and see a live presentation of that, and then we'll come back into the vet's hall and we'll adjourn the meeting at that time. So I think that's how we're going to do it today. All right, thank you. And with that, we'll open for public comment before we get into our presentation. Pardon me. So first up for public comment is Erica Crawford. Come on up Erica, you're first on the list. Oh, sorry about that.
I know, gosh, love pressure. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Erica Crawford. I'm the CEO of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to primarily read today. I'm here this afternoon to provide some operational insight into the proposed project called tentatively "4 MB Business Assistance and Outreach" that our chamber has been working on with multiple county business assistance organizations, including the EBC, who is also here tonight to lend its support to the project. This project submitted to you yesterday in draft form via Agenda Correspondence, links back directly to the council-funded and approved Economic Development Roadmap that was produced by Chapin Concepts over the last two years. Chapin's roadmap, in a nutshell, calls for a collaborative public-private partnership to accomplish economic development objectives clearly defined in each of Morro Bay's four economic centers or districts. Our project is designed to deliver on those objectives, but most importantly, it prioritizes having metrics on which to track progress. We will be counting the number of businesses we're engaged with, the number of businesses and commercial property owners that begin working on new plans for expansion or redevelopment, the number of new jobs or upskilled jobs that may come from that expansion, the number of new business inquiries coming into the city, and perhaps the dollar amount of new investment coming into the city via building permits, and any other measurables that the council may wish to hear in a monthly report. At the completion of year one, our project goal is to have interacted with every business owner and commercial property owner in the city limits, either personally in group settings or with a lead behind with our contact information. The purpose of our interaction is to communicate to these business and commercial property owners that the city of Morro Bay is interested in doing business, and that it has money allocated to produce branded placemaking signage that will link all four business districts together, and that it is committed to streamlining the process of getting licenses, permits, and plans through departments and into action. The council has placed economic and fiscal sustainability as city goal number one. It has demonstrated its commitment to this goal by funding a viable economic development plan. But plans don't improve an economy, people do. The people who know the roadblocks to eliminate are the business owners and operators making a living here every day. The people who know what businesses they need next to them to make a successful business mix in a district are the business owners and operators doing businesses there every day. The people who know the demands, needs, and wishes of their customers are the business people helping them every day. Today's chamber is trustworthy, we're renewed, we're in touch, we're professionalized, and we are positioned to engage with these people, these business people, frequently and purposefully with this project. We want to get this project into the hands of the people who aspire investment in our city and who will improve the economic vitality of Morro Bay. Thank you for your time. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and feedback during your discussion on the budget today. Thank you.
Erica, thank you. Next up is Marcia Alter, and then Bill Skinner. Welcome.
Hello, Councilwoman. She's a lot taller than I am.
Go ahead and pull that down a little bit.
There we go. Hi, I'm Marcia Alter, and I live in Oro Grande, although I am on the Board of Directors for Home Share Slow. And I want to thank you for allowing me to be here today. And I especially want to thank you and tell you how I'm excited to get to report back to you. I know that two weeks ago, one of our board members was here with some Morro Bay clients, and I wasn't able to come. So I am able to come this time, and I just wanted to thank you for your continued support and tell you what it means in numbers. Overall, in the whole county, we've had 50 matches, and this translates directly into an increase of 25 units in Morro Bay, using existing resources and requiring no new construction. It means an average income of about $8,000 for the home provider and $5,000 of savings for the home seeker. If you pencil this out for Morro Bay, we have three matches that six people's lives changed, that comes out to almost $40,000 as a return on your investments thus far, just thus far. So we're looking forward to continuing to serve, and I have to say, I am so proud of what Home Share Slow is doing for people in the community and how well-run we are on such a few, so few staff members, that we're already at a point where we've only been in operation 16 months, but we're like chugging along, you know, just moving smoothly, and it's just really magnificent. So your support really means a lot, and I personally appreciate it, and I wanted to reinforce our request, so thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Next is Bill Skinner, followed by Mike Mancheck. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members, Bill Skinner, Catalyst Consulting and Acquisitions. My office is 102 Beach Comer, North Shell Beach, California. I'm here this afternoon in support of the chamber's request through this year's budget for the four Morro Bay business assistance. In supporting the city council's allocations of those budget funds, we've been a chamber member of my business and I for over two years, and we represent clients from a wide swath that have wanted me to look at investment opportunities on the Central Coast, particularly Salsabespole County, more specifically, Morro Bay. And I believe I've talked to several council members about these opportunities, and we believe that a program such as the chamber is proposing would be paramount in moving together for an assistance of bringing a synergy, development, private industry, and the chamber into the city of Morro Bay. Some of these clients are looking for housing, retail, commercial, public facilities, municipal financing, and alternative delivery methods. I want to say something here really interesting. We also had a client looking at geo-hazard mitigation that specializes in seawall throughout the harbor area, which we've talked to Mr. Collins about. And most interesting is tech companies. I've been working with Google, that has instructed me to look at alternative sites for subcampuses for some of their employees. They're looking at Slow, the cost of housing is very high, and they're looking Morro Bay and this area, so it's a very interesting time here. Erica, or Ms. Crawford, has offered for us to become involved with the Chapin Development Plan, which we participated in. And as I mentioned, we've been having conversations with the city manager, development director, the harbor director, and public works director, among other staff. In my previous life, I was a city manager. I was a public works director, development director, and I understand the opportunities and constraints of small cities, and that they rely on the trifecta of job creation, housing creation, and sales tax and property tax generation. And that's what we're hoping that this program for Morro Bay can bring in and help assist everyone involved through public-private partnerships to move forward through sustainable measured revitalization. And I really appreciate the council's time and staff's time in supporting the chamber's request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Mike Mancheck, and then Cindy Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Oars and members of the council. My name is Mike Mancheck, and I'm with the Economic Vitality Corporation. I'm really glad to be here, actually. I've been, had the pleasure of working with Erica Crawford and Scott Collins, your manager. And I think about the change that is happening throughout the county in so many ways. We're facing what is likely the best economy we've seen in for a long, long time, but even though we're seeing lots of change happen. And I believe that with economies just like communities, economies don't necessarily operate best when they're on autopilot. They need support from the city, from the chamber, from the community, and then it's very synergistic. And I see that there's great opportunity here to make that happen. I think about also the Morro Bay Power Plant, or for that matter Diablo Canyon, and who would have thought, you know, five, 10 years ago, that both would close? So I think that with those closures, however, I still also think that we're facing tremendous opportunity, opportunities to really diversify the local economy and really charge us up to actually take action, much like Erica Crawford is talking about doing. So I see this, despite the economy and despite the employment is very high, this is a really great opportunity. And frankly, I think that, you know, we need to make lemonade out of these loans. We're looking at a billion dollars that will evaporate when Diablo Canyon closes roughly. We're going to run the numbers on that, we're doing the economic planning, thanks to your support. But I also think about the work that the city has done and the chamber has done with some of the studies. So I know that people are tired of the word "study," often I am too, but I think that we all need to remember, and I think the community should consider, we can't make good decisions without research, without asking questions, without looking at experts to figure out what are the best things, and what has worked and not worked in other places that we can glean from, and practice that here. But ultimately, I think the goal here is to improve the quality of life for everyone, look at the infrastructure, look at the housing stock, look at lots of things, and I think we can't do that without holistically doing what the chamber is wanting to do. So 100% we support Erica and what she's trying to do, we're going to be there as a partner. But I do, and lastly, I do think that this is a window of opportunity. I have watched this for 15 years to see what has come and gone, not only in this community but others in the county, and I truly believe this effort and the chamber is now the time and the place to do this. So I really hope that you support that, and we all rally around that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mancheck. Cindy Edwards, and then Eric Four.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Cindy Edwards. I'm a business owner and chair of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight on behalf of the board and my staff. Many of us in this room and Morro Bay business owners have spent so many years of their time and resources working toward this very moment. I know this moment has been a personal goal of mine since I began advocating for the business community over a decade ago. Many of us have sat next to each other in workshop after workshop and wondering, will this be the plan? Will this be the plan? Will this be the plan? And I say proudly tonight that I believe that we have the plan in the Chapin Economic Roadmap, and I believe that the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce is the right organization to facilitate it, and I also believe that we have the right partners in the 4 MB programming. I hope you support the 4 MB program. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Eric Four. And that's all I have for speaker slips for public comment, as I scan the room to see if there's anybody else for public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have a question that is specific to the budget and the wastewater project. Is this the appropriate time for it, or will there be another time?
Sure, no, this would be good, thanks.
Okay. I am not an accountant, and studying numbers like this is not what I'm experienced in. However, I know that when I go to bed at night and I have X amount of dollars in my pocket, I expect to have that many dollars in my pocket the next morning when I wake up. And so there are two instances in this budget on pages 24 and 26, when the cash on hand at year's end does not match the cash at the beginning of the next year. In one case, it's off by $34,000. In another case, it's off by $182,000. And there is no explanation for why those two numbers are not identical as they are in every other instance in this, but there's two examples in here when it's just wildly inconsistent, and it makes me wonder. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, and reserve maybe during the budget exclamation, we can address maybe some of the questions on page 24 and 26 at that time, if that's, that would be a good time. Appreciate everybody coming out and for this budget session. I think it's great to have people show up for our study session for all our budgets, so great to see folks out there. With that, we'll have our city manager introduce the item of our 2018-19 budget study session, and we'll go from there. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm proud to present the first budget of mine as a city manager for Morro Bay, but it's not my budget. It's the CFAC, it's the staff, including Jen and her team, it's other city staff who've participated in many discussions, it's individually each council member up here talking with me and Jen, it's the community talking about the goals and what they want to see come alive, and the things they want to see more of or less of. So it's a culmination of all of those things, and I'm very proud to be presenting that to you. I wanted to start off with the goals that help guide this budget and looking forward. So paramount for the city and number one city council goal is economic and financial sustainability. We all know that virtually every California city is facing a financial tsunami in the next several years as the CalPERS bill comes due. There was a lot of spending in the late 90s, early 2000s, when the fund was excelling, and, you know, we had two recessions, and the fund is now less, around 60, 70%, and we need to be able to get that back up, and the only way to do that is to increase the rates. So we're faced with a situation where our costs will go up over $1.5 million in the next several years to provide the same level of service with the same level of revenues projected. So it's something we're grappling with, along with all of our partner agencies in the county and across the state. With that being said, as Mr. Mancheck mentioned earlier, we are blessed with one of the most robust economies, one of the longest historic runs in our history as a country. You know, I think everybody expected a recession would have hit already, but there's no signs of that yet, and so we are benefiting from a very strong economy locally and regionally. Our TOT numbers are up, our sales taxes are up, our property taxes are up, and we project that going forward into the next year, which allows us, along with some trimming of our budget, strategic decision-making by staff and council, to rein in costs where we can to present a balanced budget that provides the core services that our community has come to rely upon for their quality of life. You know, police, fire, emergency response, our streets, roads, sewers, water, you know, planning, code enforcement, our harbor, all the things that make us a strong community, a viable community, are provided through this budget. Some of the things that I wanted to put out forward before I turn it over to our finance directors, some of the things that are guided beyond those goals is, we're also being very mindful of our internal service funds and looking at the fund balances to make sure we are appropriately funded for the foreseen, unforeseen circumstances, and also probably funded for future needs in our infrastructure, our equipment, like vehicles, right, IT needs as well as in our facilities. So we're really trying to do a lot of things at once, and again, blessed with the economy we have, we're able to at least present that this year. In addition, in some of that cost-cutting things that we're doing to, and be able to at least provide the same level of service, if not enhance it, is to look at technology, to look at alternative service delivery mechanisms, and also just how we can be more efficient to provide the same level of service at a reduced cost. So Jen will talk about some of the things we're doing in that front, but, you know, a lot of things have been pushed around, getting more information and data out to the public sooner, and using technology to do that in a way that's affordable for our community. And also, we have a lot of new city managers in the region who are all very aware of the coming tsunami with CalPERS, and really thinking about how we can work together as a region to come up with solutions to provide services so that our community doesn't feel the impact, but that we're able to continue to provide those services, but in a different way. So that's kind of where we are now, and then looking into the future, CalPERS is out there. We will be presenting more information about that later this month, and, you know, preparing next year really to figure out how we can get through the next five to 10 years. That looks at both sides of the ledger. That's, you know, what we can do to enhance our existing revenues, looking at new revenues potentially, but also on our expenditure sides. You know, are we as efficient as we can? Are there technologies we can utilize even more to be able to provide the services we provide today? I think we have to be very creative and open to what that might look like, and we are definitely on the cutting edge, and we have great partners who are willing to work with us in that front. So I just wanted to share that before I turn it over to Jen, and one more slide, if you want to go back. What you'll hear tonight is a general overview, kind of the 30,000-foot level for our budget. So you'll look at the revenues, the expenditures for our funds, measure Q and tourism, we'll talk about tonight, as well as our emergency reserves, and then what we'll be looking for from city council this evening is direction on the economic development plan that you heard about, as well as some minor facility needs. And then tomorrow, we start at 4:30 here, we'll get into the details of the budget. So that's kind of going through each department, getting down to the details on the funds and the bequests that you have in your budget package, and then talking about the capital budgets and projects. And then, May 22nd, we will come back and answer any questions that may be lingering from the May 8th and 9th discussions, and talk about our 10-year forecast and our CalPERS update. We're still working on putting that all together, and we wanted to make sure we had a more precise view of both of those before we present that information, which will be very helpful as we look forward into next year. So with that, I will turn it over to our finance director, Jen Cowan.
Hello, good evening. I'll go this way. So we're going to start out a little bit like Scott said and do some kind of high-level overview of the budget. The budget document looks different this year a little bit, and we want to talk about some of the things that we incorporated. There's a transmittal letter, that's really the city manager's budget message. The financial summaries are intended to give you an idea of total city revenues and expenditures, general fund revenues and expenditures, a summary of your fund balances in your different accounts, and a summary of your FTEs. We've also added in the departmental budgets, these are the general fund budgets, FTE charts as to what percentage of positions are funded in each program, key programs and services provided by the departments, accomplishments, goals, and performance indicators. And we can plan to continue to add and elaborate on these in the future year budgets and help build a history so you can see how staffing changes over time and how metrics change over time. Lastly, in sections D through I, and then the supplemental information sections, we categorized internal service funds. I would note that these are not actually functioning as internal service funds per se, but they're set up and designed to be that, so we'll kind of transition to that in the future years. You have measure Q and tourism, which are kind of your special revenue funds. The other funds are kind of a conglomerate of restricted revenues that can only be used for specific purposes. Your enterprise funds, your capital budget, and then the supplemental information. The budget is a thick document, it takes a village to kind of put this together, so we just wanted to acknowledge the staff that, besides all the directors that you visit with every couple of weeks, it's a lot of the staff that work day-to-day in the departments. And without really all of these people helping, this document would not have come together. This year, we formulated an employee budget advisory committee, had 13 members of staff on there that reviewed over 250 employee budget suggestions and vetted those through to make a recommendation to the city manager. So that was a new step that was added. We look forward to adding a citizen proportion of that next year when we get into the 1920 budget development. And then lastly, the finance team, they kind of kept the day-to-day stuff operating in-house while we were working on budgets. Sandy's sitting next to me, and then helping to compile everything together as well. And then Tracy, one of our count clerks, is responsible for the artwork on the front of the budget, so we wanted to thank her and acknowledge her for that. If we look at the budget kind of broad at a glance view and break it down by funds, the general fund operating budget is about $14.3 million. That includes transfers, that provides your core services, police, public works, community development, fire, admin services, which is city manager, finance, city attorney, city clerk, HR, and then recreation. That's funded through sales and property tax, licenses and permits, franchise fees, business tax, and transient occupancy tax, as well as several other smaller funding sources. The special revenue funds, those in the measure Q and tourism, they augment police, fire, streets, and storm drains for measure Q, promote tourism, and Morro Bay as a destination for the T-Bid. They're funded through sales tax revenue, the special add-on sales tax, and then the T-Bid assessments. The internal service funds total about $2.1 million. It's risk management, IT, project and capital accumulation, vehicle and facility replacement and maintenance. Those are really funded through inter-fund transfers primarily, meaning that money is transferred either from the general fund to one of those funds or some other funding source within another fund within the city. The other funds total $1.3 million. Again, those are really restricted for specific purposes through their assessments, grant money, impact, and in lieu fees, donations, LTF, those kind of funding sources. Enterprise funds are water, sewer, we've grouped the, sorry, grouped the treatment plant in with that as a subset of sewer, and then our harbor enterprise fund, and those are user rates and rents that fund those for about $12.7 million. And then this year, we have capital projects totaling $12.9 million. The substantial portion of that, 9.3, is the Wharf project and the proposed budget for that as we move forward, or expect to move forward with that. And so have some harbor projects included in there and some general fund facility projects. Those can be funded through a variety of sources. You can have general fund contributions towards those, gas tax, user rates, in lieu fees, measure Q specifically for the pavement management program, our PEG fees, rents again, and transit funds. We wanted to talk a little bit about the detail of our general fund revenues, kind of to highlight what we're really relying on as a city. We're taking advantage of the economy and how strong it is right now. We have, you know, almost $2 million in sales tax, that's funding our general fund, $3.3 million in property tax, $1 million in VLF backfill, small percentages of franchise fees and business tax, and then a large component in TOT, charges for services, makes up kind of the next large component at $1.2 million, and then some smaller other sources moving forward. So that kind of shows you our heaviest revenue sources are really economically sensitive, and that has to be taken into consideration in future years as we expect to see a downturn. You know, at some point, we know what'll happen. You know, at some point, we know it'll happen, it's just a matter of when. You can kind of see the trends from over the last several years too, as to how each of those has grown as the economy continues to grow. Similarly, for our general fund expenditures, regrouped those by categories, salary and benefits being the highest category, that's consistent with all other municipalities. 72% in the proposed 1819 budget, that's lower than in prior year, the prior fiscal year or the current year that we're in. The reasoning being that we defunded a couple management-level positions in the budget and also took advantage of the side fund payoff for police that resulted in a little bit of a savings. Supplies is a fairly small portion of our budget, and then services accounts for 20% of the proposed budget. That's an increase from the current fiscal year, primarily because we reclassified city attorney services all into the general fund, so we have showed that for transparency purposes. And then also has some additional contract services in there to help with the defunding of the civil engineer position. So while we are achieving some savings from doing that, there's an increase in service costs. And then capital, other debt service and equipment replacement are fairly small portions of the proposed budget. And to give you a different view of this, we broke it out by departments. Again, as standard, we have most municipalities that have their own public safety, police and fire represent a substantial portion of the budget, along with public works. You know, those three departments are over 50% of our budget. City administration is next, and that takes into account, you know, all the functions that are happening at City Hall. So the city attorney department, city clerk, HR, finance, and then the city manager's office. Community development is next with recreation, then community development, and the city council is about 1%. When we look at the city as a whole and our expenditures, we have general fund expenditures are significant portion, followed by the enterprise, and they're both about equal in proportion. And this year, our capital projects are growing quite a bit, and again, that's because of the $9.3 million for the Wharf project, so that's why you see that big jump for capital. Some of the brief highlights in the proposed 1819 budget, increased revenues, so those three main revenue sources that we talked about, sales tax, TOT, and property tax, they all have growth rates built into those. Sales tax is expected to grow 2.6% over what we forecast year-end actuals to close. That's provided by our sales tax consultant, HDL, so we took those numbers from them. TOT, we've forecasted fairly conservatively at 1%. And then property tax, the county gave us estimates and they were projecting 5% growth. So we use those estimates in the proposed budget. For expenditures, just some of the detail of what we talked about, increased services, it's increased from $531,000 in the general fund, again, due to the city attorney reclassification, the civil engineer services, animal services, and then there's funding in there for the city's fee study update, if we receive proposals back, which are due at the end of this week. Also, there's $65,000 in other expenditures. This includes $21,500 in council bequests and beautification. Those are subject for your consideration and award as you would like. Those are the requests that were addressed earlier today from EVC. Home share slow is proposed to be funded out of the housing and lieu fees, so that wouldn't be considered part of that. And then there's $5,000 of that is for the discretionary beautification. That was discussed by the council previously and can be incorporated here or anywhere else in the budget, but we wanted to highlight that ad. Also, there's $24,000, $25,000 electricity, $10,000 in special events, and $9,000 for JPA. That was kind of a vague category, so we wanted to highlight what was included in there for the council. We've included $35,000 for debt service, that's to offset the solar installation loan that we carry, $50,000 for vehicle replacement, $30,000 for risk management, $30,000 for compensable leave, and then the increased support to tourism of $157,000. That's based off of what we project the TOT to come in at for fiscal year 1819 on top of the base funding of $60,000, and $357,000 contribution to IT from the general fund. Some of the details of salary and benefits. In the general fund, we provided direction to the departments that any additional position request had to be cost-neutral to the general fund. So everything that has been added is in fact cost-neutral, and you can see that in the decline in the salary and benefits piece of the general fund budget. So $230,000 reduction that was achieved through defunding of the DCM position, defunding of the senior civil engineer. We were able to fund the equivalent of one FTE consolidated maintenance in the Cloisters Assessment District. Previously, staffing has been charged to Cloisters. We had a meeting with two of the residents of Cloisters who attended their regular quarterly meeting. It was expressed at that point that they would like more staffing staff out there in the district, so we tried to accommodate that need. We also defunded some, or reduced the number of part-time hours in the public works department. And the combination of that reduction in part-time hours and funding a position in the Cloisters district allowed us to fund two new consolidated maintenance one positions. The effort was to provide frontline service-level staffing to the community that would have a direct impact on day-to-day core services. These are the positions that are outdoing, you know, the maintenance and the cleaning of the restrooms, removal of the trash. So those are new positions that have been added to the budget. Also, a one-year contractor pilot position, if you will, for a records clerk training coordinator. That was offset by some transfers of funds to Measure Q for equipment purposes. .75 FTE in property technician, that is a position that has already been working at that level but was unbenefited. When you're working 35 hours a week, you really should be entitled to benefits, so that person's now going to, is proposed to be benefited and is funded in the grant program, so there's no general fund impact to that. The police requested a one-year pilot for an admin sergeant position. The incremental cost increase of promoting a senior officer to that admin position is proposed to be funded in Measure Q, and the CFAC committee approved that recommendation when they reviewed the Measure Q budget. We also included 2% COLA increases for SEIU, the firefighters group, management, and confidential. This is based on the agreements that were already negotiated with those unions. There's trigger points in those agreements that would indicate that we would owe them a 2% COLA increase. Based on projections we have right now, it appears that we'll meet those trigger points, so we went ahead and forecasted, included those in the budget. We also budgeted people at their next due step, so if somebody's at a step two in the salary band, they were budgeted at step three, so they had the ability to grow in their position. So between the steps and the 2%, that's what comprises the salary portion of the proposed budget. We accounted for the pension increases in the miscellaneous classification, the Tier Two and the Pepper's. We took advantage of the payoff in the police side fund that we spoke about earlier. We did not include any discount for the prepayment of the fireside fund that the council approved a month or so ago. And what that means is we will flush out about $170,000 in savings at year-end that can transfer to the emergency reserves and in essence, pay ourselves back for that prepayment. We also accounted for some increases that we expect to see in health rates, workers' comp, unemployment, and those kind of other smaller benefit categories. The Measure Q budget, that was presented and approved by the CFAC committee on April 25th. The CFAC committee presented a, provided a memo that was provided to the council and the community with the budget. The memo provided comments that they approved the proposed budget as it was presented, gave guidance on wanting to see proper documentation to support the purchase of the fire truck as a single-source or sole-source purchase, gave other guidance on the purchasing practices in terms of the body-worn cameras that are proposed for the police department, and also gave kind of a word of caution that they were okay supporting the budget as it was for 1819, would prefer not to see some offsets from the general fund in the 1920 and future year budgets, so will remain cognizant of that as we move forward. The proposed budget for Measure Q is $1.08 million. Those revenues, again, were provided by HDL, our sales tax consultant. Fires forecasted to receive $480,000 of that. The only thing that really is different from prior years is the purchase of the fire engine with a $60,000 contribution towards the down payment on that. The committee did ask that we look at either loaning money to, using cash on hand to purchase it instead of paying interest by financing it, so staff will do that and bring that forward when the contract comes to council. $101,000 for police. There's no SRO position funded this year in the budget as was prior years. The police has requested body-worn cameras, the admin sergeant position, which is the incremental cost increase that we talked about, about $16,000, and then standby pay, which was approved in prior years. The payment to other agencies is the bomb task force training and then the CAD service. And the cautionary note, I would say that CFAC added was with regard to the CAD services, that's kind of a previously general fund purchase that they'd like to see moved back there in the 1920 and future year budgets. So we will remain mindful of that. The remaining balance goes to the pavement management plan, that's about $502,000. That money will be transferred to the CIP project. It would be augmented with about $200,000 of SB1 money, so there'll be about $700,000 for pavement management work. And again, that was approved by the committee on April 25th. The tourism budget, that was presented to the tourism board and approved by the board on April 19th, I believe. That proposed budget is $997,000, $836,000 in assessments, $157,000 in general fund contribution, and there's about $4,000 from advertising. The expenditures are $196,000 in salary and benefits, $760,000 for marketing, public relations, and community event support, and then $20,000 of that comes back to the general fund and IT fund for admin support and IT support. Wanted to highlight a little bit about general fund emergency reserves. You can kind of see, not so great here on the chart, but the trend of the emergency reserves where it's dipped down and then we're forecasting it to go back up. Those dips were planned uses or approved uses of general fund reserves for purchases of street opaque, prepayment of the fireside fund, and then you can see in 1819, we're forecasting to kind of pay ourselves back and start building those reserves back up. The other thing we wanted to just touch on a little bit today, and we're going to go into more depth on the 22nd, but just to be mindful of our PERS rates and what they're projected to do going forward. I'm going to bring in all the classic rates first, the miscellaneous rate, you can see has kind of a gradual increase. Our police rate, you kind of see the dip down, and that's that payment of the side fund that we completed in this year, 1718, and that savings that we took advantage of for that. It's projected to go back up quite substantially through '24, '25 unless something changes. The fire classic rate, this one does not take into account that prepayment. And again, we're not kind of counting on that savings so we can pay ourselves back. So you see it goes up and then dips down in '20, '21 when we would have paid that $300,000 side fund off. So that whole line will kind of move back two years, and we'll see, we'll actually see some savings in 1819. And then when you look at kind of the Tier Two rates that come in, they gradually increase, but not at the same level as the classics, and then our Pepper's are even less than the Tier Two. So what that means in context is that our UAL is our UAL, that's money that we, which is the unfunded accrued liability, that is money that we owe for promises made to retired classic employees and current classic employees. But as we transition from classic employees to Tier Two and Pepper's, that UAL wouldn't grow based on promises. It may grow based on what the market does and what interest rates do, but not based on the promises that are owed. There was, in the staff report, we noted some corrections that were identified after distributing the draft budget. There was a new sewer revenue package that was provided with the staff report to update the revenue section specifically, and that flows into the summary pages, so we updated that whole part. I think one of the errors that was pointed out during public comment on H24 was on the equipment replacement fund. I've corrected that now in the model, but it was an Excel carryforward, it picked up the wrong one, so that should be 683, and we'll make that a correction in the final budget that's presented to you in June. And then I wasn't clear what the other one was and didn't see it, so maybe if the speaker could give me more direction on that, we can follow up on that. Also, for the PEG access fees, $32,000 should be included in the 1819 budget for expenditures, and that's to help fund the proposed CIP project if the council approves it for the audiovisual upgrades in the facility. $15,000 should be added to the police department general fund, and that is for step increases that were missed in the first draft. And then in the transient page, this was not included in the staff report, but there needs to be a recognition of $83,000 in grant funds as a revenue and a transfer out of $83,000 to the capital project to purchase the new bus with the transit money. And that's on page G3 if you're taking notes in your budget. So what we hope to do tonight is get some direction from the council on the economic development strategic plan and the facility needs. Those items were addressed in the staff report, again, came up after distribution of the budget. There's a proposal for $25,000 to support the chamber in the economic development strategic plan. We've identified funding source with opportunity fund and the strategic investment spending plan. And then secondly, the facility needs, it's identified after the budget that there's a stream of kind of unidentified unforeseen needs that will arise throughout the year if something breaks in a facility that are fairly small amounts, and we don't really have a designated fund for them or a budget set aside for that, so we're asking to transfer $10,000 from the capital fund to the facility maintenance fund to kind of offset some of those minor projects that come out throughout the year, and we can handle them at the staff level without coming back for council appropriation. So next, we were just going to kind of talk about the other meetings, and I think Scott did that, so discussion or questions?
I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't hear the last statement.
If you have any discussion or questions or guidance on...
Okay. All right, great. So at this point, we can take questions from council. Following questions, we'll start through discussion items, and we might want to frame that a little bit. I mean, you know, we could have content questions and editorial questions, so if there's, you know, we might want to kind of organize our thoughts as a council on editorial, if we can, you know, maybe package those all together and deliver those for staff and Jen to be able to, pardon me, manage, and then if there's, you know, budget content discussions, we can go through that. So starting off with questions, pardon me. I guess I just wanted to frame that, so I guess we could just jump right into questions at that point, and then we'll get into discussion. Red, could you start us off? Was that clear?
No.
Okay. So as we go into questions on the budget, you know, if there's editorial comments on there, it's just, hey, page three, I see an editorial on there, maybe you just itemize all, you know, kind of get all those together and say, yeah, I've got some editorial comments that I've found, and I just... got some editorial comments that I've found, and I'll just, you know, here they are. And then if there's, you know, questions as related to, hey, this particular fund, I want to talk about that and have some questions about that. That might help Jen and staff to manage the editorial items together. So I'll turn it to you to start us off with questions, and then I'll work to my right to Marla.
Okay, thanks. And I don't have any editorial questions, but I do want to pay a high compliment to our finance department and our city manager for producing what I have seen as the best expression ever of marrying the city's goals to its resources. If someone asked me, what is Moro Bay, I would give them this book because this tells our whole story. So that's all I have.
Okay, Matt, any questions?
Yes, I do. Jen, I guess this is a question when we're looking at the budgets and then breaking it down by categories, specifically services and how we're talking about, is there, because I know sometimes when you mentioned in terms of in light of transparency, talking about city attorney fees and other fees or costs that we're taking on, is there a reason that we're putting all of those, like the engineer and the city attorney fee, under one umbrella called services and not necessarily breaking them into city attorney fees or, and then other categories?
Communities do it differently. So some communities would even have a more broad category and just call it operating expenditures. So you'd have salary benefits, operating expenditures, and maybe capital outlay and equipment. We kept the categories that had previously been used in the prior year budgets to help avoid any further confusion since there's enough changes going on with this document. Typically don't like to have it be line item by line item details, so however we want to group those, we can do that. But they should be in some general, you know, groupings that gives some flexibility, but also gives enough knowledge to know what we're doing.
Hey, okay, then that's the answer to the question because then the next follow up with this document, with the budget, this is one source of interested person could come and find these expenditures. But with the soon to come onto the city's website, there will be another means for people to track down various costs, i.e. services and/or, the big one in the room is always the city attorney fees.
Right. So when OpenGov becomes, the portal becomes available, that will be down to line item detail.
And that's what I just wanted to let people know that there is, it's not going to be just hidden within services.
Correct.
And also, I'd like to dito what Red said, this is a wonderful document. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you, and good evening. I'll echo what Councilman Davis said to include maybe a broader thank you, not only to the finance team, finance leader, city manager, but also it's so important to bring staff into the mix of things and get their input. And I'm just impressed to see that you've had the inclusion of not only all departments at some level, but also an employee budget advisory committee that was formed to give input, and I think that's really important. And then I want to just also make note of our citizens' finance advisory committee. Really appreciate their overview and the questions that they brought up, and thank you for providing that in your commentary that you gave us and provided us with. And then we're going to get into all the details tomorrow, so I'm not going to jump into that, maybe just a couple of macro observations for me. One would be the absence of what I would consider to be relevant benchmarks in terms of what we're looking at. It appears when we look at our city budget that it's within the context of a microcosm of Moro Bay. And it's always good to have an understanding of some kind of benchmark numbers to look at, staffing and expenditures with regard to other cities and how we compare. Not that they're always apples to apples, but at least for some of the major cost areas to try to give us a better understanding of where we might be well outside of the realm of what we might call normal, the normal curve. As an example, if we're spending, you know, a million dollars on, I'll make this up. Don't want anybody to think I'm commenting about a department, but a million dollars on recreation, because I see our recreation people here. And most communities on average per capita spend, you know, half a million. You know, that gives us something that may be out of context, and there may be an explanation for that. So possibly in the future, I know that the league has a lot of good benchmarking information and without creating a lot more work for you all, it would be really neat to see that. And I'm glad to hear you're working on performance standards within the departments themselves. I think that's very helpful. One of the things that concerns me, and I think it was raised at CFAC, Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, is the funding one time of issues that might revert back to the general fund in future years. And so that concerns me just as a general comment. We've made some, we've got some new recommendations coming for some things that might come out of Measure Q, maybe as one time issues, but there's probably going to be future costs for that if we approve that. That will have an impact on the general fund in the future. So I just, I have a red flag that's raised as a result of that. The other thing for me would be the presentation format. I just wanted to comment on that. Thanks for, and I think Councilman Davis said it, thanks for the way you've organized it, very easy to read, very easy to follow the various funds. And that I think is important, especially for the public, because it's really hard to understand all that stuff and figure out what goes where and how it mixes together. And this is another iterative step that I think is very positive in explaining that. And I love graphs. And so graphic representations, I'm a visual, and many people are, are very helpful, and I very much appreciate the graphic representations as I see those. If you're looking for comments on economic development, here they come. I'm a fan. I support it. We have to have revenue diversification in the community in order to get ahead and do what we need to do. So I am 1.1,000% in favor of moving forward with that when we get to it, if we're going to get into further detail. But I think you were looking for some general guidance there. I really...
Questions?
Question?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, comment. Never mind. Good, thanks. I'll stop.
A little reminder from your friend.
A little reminder, thanks.
There you go.
Have a good day.
All right, thanks.
Sorry for that.
Good job, Marla. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I too want to say thank you very much for this budget presentation, and it's just such a great improvement. I love having the department by department, and I know you're going to keep working on developing better indicators. And I'm sure that we'll see continued improvement. But I think also the graphs that you have included in this presentation would be very nice to include in the budget friendly document that we want to produce for the citizens, and we want to have like on the front page of our website, and, because this is really a very good visual presentation. I also want to thank CFAC, and I did sit in on their most recent meeting where they reviewed the budget and reviewed Measure Q and really concurred with all of their recommendations. And I think they brought up an excellent issue that I think we do need to resolve in some way, and I don't know if we do it during this budget session or have a special, if it's a future agenda item. But that really gets at what Measure Q is about, what we should be spending the money on, and what kind of guidance was in the original ballot measure that was passed. Because I think we need to really understand if it was intended to be used just for extra things or if it really was to support and supplement funding for the police, fire, and our streets and roads. Because there was a question that came up at CFAC about transferring money from the general fund to Measure Q funding. And as we move into the future and funds are really tight, I think we need to have a really good understanding of how we can use Measure Q monies. So I'm not suggesting that we resolve that now, but I just would like us to think about that and perhaps have a discussion about that. I'm not going to get into the specifics, which we will, I understand, do tomorrow. But could you, Jen, explain what paying off the side fund means? Because that has come up twice, and I think it would be helpful for at least the citizens to understand, and me too.
Sure. So KELPERS classifies employees into groups. There's miscellaneous, which is all the non-sworn or non-public safety employees. There's a fire classification and then a public safety or police classification. For those groups, in cities with those groups, with less than 100 employees or less than 100 enrollees, when the economy crashed, they were assigned these side funds to help make up for the loss in value of the pool. Because we're all pooled together for less than 100 enrollees. So we got, we and all the other smaller cities that have that less than 100 were given these side funds. There were seven-ish years to pay off, and they kind of had different timeframes depending on the classification. The police side fund was scheduled to be paid off in 1718. So we've made the final payment, or will make the final payment by the end of this year. And what that means is our overall rate that we pay to PERS for those police employees will go down because they build the side fund into that employer contribution rate. Our fireside fund was supposed to get paid off in two years, 2020, '21, and that's what council authorized us to prepay to save about $7,000 in interest because we won't have to give that to PERS now. We'll get to keep the $7,000 in payment in advance. So I hope, does that clarify?
Thank you very much. It does help, I think, to understand what, exactly what that means. When we approve the budget, are we approving all of the capital improvement projects that are contained in here? Or do we have some discretion during the year? Will these things come back to us in some way to approve?
So tomorrow, we'll have a more in-depth conversation on the capital projects that are proposed. But this would be the time if you wanted to reprioritize them or not approve one or more of them or suggest others to have the council conversation about what those projects should be. And staff will come back with a revised plan according to your direction at that point.
Okay. And then I take it the same is true of our discretionary fund the city council has for the beautification and bequests?
That's correct.
Can we just appropriate an amount and later make a decision about the specifics? Or is it necessary at our budget meeting to do that?
So for the bequest line item that you've had in the past and is standard, you have received, I think, three at this point requests for funding. You can choose to approve those now or not. That's at your discretion. For the beautification, that's really in support of the adopted program, if you will, which hasn't finalized yet. And you can make that again at your discretion, depending on how the program comes back to council, if it's subject to your approval or at the staff level.
So we would essentially be just approving an amount, not necessarily the specific?
That's how I would interpret that beautification item. The bequest would be different.
We have to specify bequests? We can't just say during the year we're going to...
If you're going to approve any of the three that have come forward, you'd have to specify those now. Otherwise, you could say, I want to hold off on that $16,000. You could change the amount even until later in the year.
Just want to make sure what we're really approving when we approve the budget.
It's really your budget, and you have discretion to, as a group, tell us how you'd like funds allocated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Jen, and staff. And I'll echo all the thanks and gratitudes from our colleagues on council for all the work from everybody. Jen, the first question is, what were the presentation tools that you used tonight for the graphs and things like that? Is that a new tool that we've acquired from the city? Can you...
Just PowerPoint and Excel.
Just, okay, PowerPoint. Okay, thanks. And then as far as some of the editorial questions, I mean, we met earlier today, and there were some questions on some of the items. First of all, and I can get into more of the discussion when we get, you know, comments when we get into discussion, but there are some things in this document that are unique that we haven't had in past budgets. So I just want to say thanks for that because it's really, really great. But in each fund, there's some descriptions, and there was one particularly on where it showed actually a dip in one of the graphs, but there weren't any notes in it as in some of the other items. And whether or not we comment on that specifically or, you know, one-on-one, we kind of have those comments and those things can get inserted, what would be your preference on that?
I think in terms of notes or asking for an explanation on something, on a graph or a page, that isn't there any grammatical or typos or, you know, small editorial changes? If you can get those to us, we can incorporate those. If there's anything that maybe seems like it needs to involve a discussion, we can bring that forward to the council. But otherwise, we would incorporate those. And you'll get a new document for adoption in June, so they would have all those incorporated changes.
Okay. And then on the, on the presentation, page nine of the presentation, under proposed 2018-19 budget, under expenditures, there is the $35,000 for debt service on solar installation loan. That's not necessarily a fund that's in the budget, but can that be included at some point during this time? Or would we be able to do that mid-year or to a point where we can identify the loan that we have out on our solar system to identify how we're doing on that?
So we could include a note on that page that talks about the loan if you're looking for the savings that we've achieved from the installation of the solar. We haven't, Sandy just filed the report maybe a month ago, so at this point. But we haven't been through a full year cycle, so we haven't received all of our credits back yet, and we really can't tell you if we're actually achieving the amount of savings. We could bring that part back in mid-year.
Okay, perfect. And then on the $357,000 for IT support, can you expand on that?
Sure. If you look at the budget page under the internal services tab, it's D5, but the detail is actually on D6. And that is, it funds the IT manager, it funds a portion of my salary for overseeing the department, and then all of our maintenance contracts, IT service contracts for all of our, you know, our finance system, HDL, which we run business license through, the OpenGov will be in there, some of the police systems that they use are in there, CityWorks. Any of the IT software systems that we use are funded in this program in addition to the computers and the equipment that we have.
So pretty specific to a larger investment in this budget cycle rather than ongoing annual expenditure for IT?
The regular expenditures are ranging between $2,000 and, you know, $400,000 depending on the year. And I would suspect, again, I wasn't here, you know, maybe some new items that have come on. There's a little bit of an increase in 1819, and that is offset by some of the user fees, which is, you know, $53,000 in user fees to help pay for laser fish, CityWorks, some of the newer programs that we're bringing on and attempting to utilize for efficiency purposes.
Okay. All right, great. I think those are all my questions, and we can probably get into discussion at this point. And so just to clarify, as I turn back to our guidance page, yeah, there is the one from you, Jen, on exactly what we want to accomplish today. And then tomorrow, it looks like we'll come back and have more discussion on the capital CIP and things like that. So we'll get into discussion on what we'd like to see back for tomorrow. Is that more accurate?
It would be helpful. I think there's probably a lot to discuss tomorrow if we could have the conversation or get through the conversation on the economic development, if you'd like to see that incorporated and what's brought back to you as the final budget, as well as the facility piece. We could check those two off, and then tomorrow, deal with capital and the departmental budgets and the more detail.
Okay. All right. All right, perfect. So with that, we'll... So with that, we'll get into discussion. So we need general discussion on whether or not we support the economic development portion of that. And I would say I'm in favor of that. And if you want to have any comments with that, Red, if you want to start us off on any of those?
Sure. Thank you. The chambers requested $30,000 to implement their 4MB plan, and the recommendation from staff is to fund $25,000. I want to support the full request. Fiscal sustainability is our number-one goal, and we have agreed that the best way to accomplish that is through increasing revenue. And this is our plan to do that. So the city has limited resources to make this plan work as far as staff is concerned. But the chamber is willing to be our partner, and I want to support that. Erica has already gone through the first round of meetings with business owners from all four economic zones. And there's a lot of interest from the business community to make this plan work. So the first steps are pretty easy. They are branding, improving gateways, and installing wayfinding signs. Erica has built-in metrics to the plan and reports back to the chamber to help us assess the success of what she's going to accomplish. I love Jennifer for being tight-fisted, and I love her for seeing the value of implementing this plan because she did suggest that we might find an additional $5,000 in the Strategic Investment Spending Plan Fund, which was created in FY '16 to designate funding for strategic improvements within the city. And I would say that this is one of the most important strategic improvements that we have. That fund, at present, has $167,000 in it. $5,000 is scheduled to be transferred in FY '19 to IT services. And I would recommend an additional $5,000 to fully fund the chamber's effort for this. We're getting a lot of, a lot of quality work in the 4MB plan for $30,000. And I know from conversations with Erica that her board actually values their contribution at more than that, but they are sensitive to our financial situation, and they've scaled it down to $30,000. So I think we're getting more than our money's worth for $30,000, and I think we cannot afford to miss this opportunity. So that's my recommendation.
Okay. Maria, great. Thanks. Matt?
With that said, I have, that's a great suggestion, Red. The $25,000 is great, but then finding where that additional $5,000, I would concur with Red to move it up to the $30,000, being that it's, can be covered. And I support it.
John?
Well, finally, figuring what you want tonight, after looking through multiple documents, I would agree with what Councilman Davis said about the goals and the fact that revenue diversification for the future is absolutely paramount. We've got to get moving on economic development now. And I do believe that the chamber is positioned and has done a very good job so far in getting input and engaging businesses in the community. And so I would support the $30,000 as well. Is there anything else you're asking at this time that you want me to address? Are you looking for direction on the EBC recommendation or anything else this time?
We'll do bequests tomorrow.
Okay.
So that, and then the...
I'm looking at several documents here, so...
Yeah, the transfer of $10,000.
Transfer of $10,000? Okay. So I do support the transfer of $10,000 from the capital replacement fund 462, the facility maintenance fund, for those day-to-day operational items that need to be funded. So I would also support that as well. And I think those are your two asks, and I gave my commentary earlier, so I won't say anything else. Thank you.
Okay. Marla?
Yeah. I too support the requests, and I would support the 30 full, $30,000, and also the transfer. I did have some just general comments that I just will add at this point. I know you only wanted this, but I think I could make one or two general. I guess I already made one about the Measure Q. The other thing that I would really like to see in this budget document is, when it comes to some of these major, like the police and the fire, we're funding from various sources, from the general fund, from Measure Q, there's money in contract services for the dispatch, there's grants, there's donations. I would like to see an overall what it really costs to run the police department and the fire department. And I'm thinking specifically because in the future, and when we have to really, our funding might not be as great as it is right now, and we have to start making cuts, or we have to, we really do need to understand the full costs of those critical departments because they're the ones that we spend the most money on in our city. So I'm just asking that because the funds come from various sources, it would be helpful to have an overall understanding.
Okay. I would go ahead and support the economic development request as well. And Red, I would support your added request, so long as council is supportive of that as well, and the transfer of the 10K. That's primarily, I think, where we need to go. And then, any other additional comments to move forward tomorrow? I think I've got some additional questions, or excuse me, comments for tomorrow as well. And I'd like to just move forward on some of those. Were there additional comments from council on going forward?
Just one cleanup item to stay out, if that was part of what they were looking for as well. On page B4 of the total city revenue fund, we have a capital replacement fund, a project accumulation fund, and there was an old strategic allocation fund. I'm wondering if we could combine those maybe possibly into a single strategic future capital needs, or whatever you may want to call it, fund? And I'm speaking to, I hope, the right place. The B4?
B4?
The, should be in the right spot there. There's a strategic allocation fund, there's a project accumulation fund, and there's a capital needs fund. I wonder if we could combine those, even though we're not budgeting for anything unfortunately this year because we don't have the capital, the dollars to do it. Maybe consider that just as a cleanup item. Thanks.
Okay. Red, you had some more comments?
Yeah. I forgot to say that I also support the $10,000 transfer for maintenance.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So I just want to make, I have some comments on what I'd like to see for tomorrow with the rest of council support, if we were able to go there. Jen, first of all, I want to just say thanks for meeting today and going through some of my questions, because we're going to go into more detail on some of the capital parts of things. And I think maybe some of the suggestions that I have might be helpful for that. Specifically, in the budget, we, under the T-bid, we have the $157,000 that's allocated out of the general fund. We're going to have that discussion later on tonight, so I won't make any assumptions. But I would like to have further discussion on that tomorrow, depending on what our discussion is on the T-bid item. And then, the internal service fund balances, there's a number of internal service fund balances that I would like to see combined in, a combination of just what the total fund balances are. Specifically, and I know we talked about the risk management fund, we have approximately $300,000 in there. By policy, we have, our minimum is $100,000. And I know we've had some conversations, Jen, about what the risk management fund balance should or shouldn't be. And there's, you know, we've gone through different variations of that. But to be conservative, perhaps maybe leaving, for now, until we get more data, a balance of $250,000 in there, and then just understand what the difference is. So if we have approximately $300,000 in there, and we maintain a $250,000 balance, we just draw that out for discussion, for what we might be able to utilize that for spending. Specifically, you know, we can talk to more detail tomorrow. And then I'd like to understand what the list of opportunities are. So if we're, if we have fund balances in our internal service fund balances, and like John, making up a number, not to say there's a million out there, but, you know, if there's, you know, $100, $200, $500,000 in there, out of those fund balances, what are opportunities to utilize those on capital programs? And then the other, I think the other thing we need to understand is, what are the opportunities that we need to save some of that or transfer some of that into our general fund emergency reserve for the PERS bubble that we've also talked about? So those are some of the questions that I, or some of the requests that I have for tomorrow's conversation. And then Park and Lou fund, I just want to understand, we, I know we have a balance in there. We have, in one of the CIP programs, we have City Park that's requesting funds for the, upgrading some of the features there. But whether or not we could utilize the Park and Lou funds or not, whether or not it's for some CIP? And I guess my other question is, it's approximately $260,000 on the Park and Lou fund. I'd like to understand if we could utilize that to pay down Cerito Peak? And if those funds could be utilized, because those are our Park and Lou funds, we've used our, we use the funds that were out of our emergency reserve to purchase that, would we be able to utilize Park and Lou fees to actually use that for open space? That's an in-depth conversation, maybe for tomorrow. And that just kind of frames some things that we can, that can help us with tomorrow's conversation. And those are all my comments. Any more? John, or, excuse me, Red, or Matt? John?
I assume, I'm trying to understand tomorrow, too. Are we, with regard to, for instance, like the wastewater treatment facility project budget, are we going to go into significant detail with regard to that? I think, I think Marla asked the question. If we approve the budget, does that mean that the $12 million automatically gets spent? And my thought is, or my assumption is, the decisions to spend pieces of that will come back on a routine basis to us for final decision during the year. We're just approving the context. And so I guess I'm trying to understand tomorrow, what exactly are we going to see besides what was the mayor added, which I agree with?
So we'll go through the proposed capital projects, probably in a little bit high-level overview, and then you're welcome to dig into the details of any or all of them if you'd like. The purchasing authority for the city under the purchasing guidelines is, it comes back to council at $125,000. So if you were to approve the proposed project for the Bachi Ballpark, let's say, the estimate right now is $35,000. That would be within the county manager's authority to award that contract if the bids stayed within that, you know, realm. So you wouldn't necessarily see that come back. And if you approve the budget, you're giving the authority for staff to go ahead and do that project. On the contrary, the fire engine is $675,000. We would need to bring that contract back to the council for approval. Approving it in the budget is giving us the go-ahead to solicit bids and start the process, but we can't sign a contract for that until it comes back to council. So it depends on the, on the level of spending.
There's one more thing on my notes that I didn't cover. I just wanted to make sure that we have the availability when we get to the pavement management plan, if we can have crosswalks as an option on our pavement management plan. So in our business districts and various areas where crosswalks are hazardous, let's say, because of some of the paving irregularities, if we can see what an option would be to have the crosswalks inserted into the pavement management plan for discussion for council on whether or not there's the will to do that? And also repairing of some of the lifted sidewalks. And that may be an opportunity through a risk management fund to be able to do that. And then just have some data on the overall scope of that. I believe we have some data that might help us with that, and if we can bring that back tomorrow for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just so the record's clear, you used a word that made my ears go up.
Sure.
I'm sure you don't mean that there's things out there that are a public hazard. What you want to do is make sure that we have things in the best possible position they can be in.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks for helping me with that. Okay. Anything else? With that, we want to, we're going to conclude this item. We're going to look for our presentation from the police chief on the drone exercise at this point. And then I think we're going to go out for a little demonstration. Chief, it's all up to you.
Thank you, honorable council members, staff, and community. The presentation you're about to see is of our unmanned aerial system, better known as a drone. And public safety agencies throughout the United States have been using the unmanned aerial systems to provide critical, real-time information and situational awareness during a wide range of law enforcement activities, and for that matter, safety and public safety activities. Life-threatening incidents, rescues, major disasters, documenting major crime or collision scenes, and finding survivors during searches are all part of our improved public safety Using the UASs will enhance our ability to protect and serve the Morro Bay community. It will help us to de-escalate situations by determining the nature of threats. It will improve school safety, community safety. It will allow us to enhance our assistance to the fire department and other public safety agencies. And as a matter of fact, we have used the drones on a training basis in conjunction with our other city departments for rescue missions, community education, and other sources. We've conducted an extensive review of our policies, procedures, and legal restrictions assisted by our city attorney to develop guidelines and procedures that will consider community concerns and privacy interests. We're proud to announce our drone program, and at this time, we're going to take a short recess and go outside and see our new equipment in action. I believe it's set up. So at this time, we're going to step out to the parking lot.
Okay. Great. And then we'll be right back.